Welcome into Down the Rabbit Hole Podcast. We're sitting in here today, we've got a special show for you guys. Have you driven down Sykes Mill Road and seen this sign? I'm sure most of you have, some of you haven't. If you're wondering what it's about, we're gonna find out today. We've got them in the studio with us. We appreciate y'all coming in. Got my normal panel, y'all know Brian and Jeff, sitting in here. I've got Tim Kazai.
Happy to be here. Thank you for having us.
We appreciate y'all coming in here. We want to get to the bottom of this story. Because it's obviously a heated dispute going on in here. And it looks to me like you're having a fight with Unionville Town Council and it's they, I guess it's control of property that you own, correct?
That is correct. And it's pretty self-explanatory too, if people just go to the website, www dot the truth about Unionville NC dot com.
We're gonna make sure to put that up right here so that you get it spelled right and you get right in. We encourage you to go to his website and look through the videos, audio recordings from the town council meetings. And to get the whole story about what's going on, but uh, if you don't mind, give us a little crash course about uh, how did you come to be at odds with the town of Unionville's Town Council?
My, my current situation is they uh, do not want me to build mini warehouses between my house and Vans Welding, which is a heavy industrial welding shop.
Okay.
And uh,
Did they provide a reason for that?
Yes, uh, pretty much their reason for turning me down was uh, when Vans was rezoned years ago, the county had control of the zoning.
Okay.
And they claimed they shouldn't have to rezone mine. However, when I applied for my uh, zoning change and my zoning permit, the land use administrator, Sonia Gaddy, she recommended approval. The planning board gave unanimous recommendation to council that they approved my project.
Is that right?
They turned me down anyway.
Okay.
And uh, to be honest with you, they just do not like me. It goes back years.
Yeah, I'm looking on here. I wanted to bring this up. I'm glad you went that way. I'm looking at this newspaper article that you wrote circa 2004, 2000 issue?
It was wrote somewhere probably around 2004.
Looks to be uh, you know.
It's titled, Unionville Come Out of the Dark Ages.
And again, this is on the website. If, so if you guys want to get in there and have a look at it.
And please do.
Uh, yeah, he really wants you to go check out his website. So here's the link right here. Go to it and see it. Um, everything's on there though. Because of this letter, now they hold a vendetta?
Basically, Unionville, ever since it reincorporated years ago, they uh,
Ninety-eight, right?
I believe that's right.
Yeah, it was ninety-eight.
What does that mean when a town reincorporates?
Well, they become a municipality. Some towns uh, control their own zoning, some uh, let the county do it.
Okay.
Uh, Hemby Bridge lets the county do it. But Unionville does control their own and they became a town basically just so that they could keep everything either cornfields, chicken houses.
Okay.
Or cow pastures. And with that said, I don't have a thing against that, against those things.
Right.
I don't have a thing against farmers. I love farmers.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, my brother and I own a couple farms in Southern Union County and we love our farmers and their families to death. They are good people. But uh, our current town council and past town council has never been able to learn how to share their toys, so to speak. And what I'm referring to as toys is the, the land in Unionville. And in Unionville, there is a lot of land that would be better used for a mini warehouse facility such as my two acres between my house and the welding shop. The Five Forks area, there was a Dollar General fresh market proposed there, would have been a perfect location for it. Central Unionville would have benefited everyone in Unionville and on the outskirts. Our board won't allow anything like that to come into Unionville. And that's part, that's what the article Come Out of the Dark Ages was about, really. I mean, they turned down a food line years ago where uh, Dennis Moser owns property and wanted to put a food line there. They turned that down. They've got this mindset that if they allow a few commercial amenities to come into Unionville, that we're gonna lose our Mayberry field. We are a growing community with pop, in population. And people need services. They're just not a fair board.
So you applied and I assume you went to a meeting, a council meeting?
Oh, yes.
And they said, uh, we're sorry, Mr. Kazai, but we are turning down your proposal.
That's pretty much, if you listen, we put the meetings on the website. They're at the very bottom.
The audio recordings are there.
Audio recordings. And if the people will go to those audio recordings and listen to them, they will s- you will be able to see. It's clear and evident that council based their decision to turn me down on incompetent evidence.
Okay. So looking through some of those recordings, did you have a, and I saw you had a petition signed, right?
Yes, I had over 250 signatures from neighbors supporting what I wanted to do that were in, that were for.
And then did you have a neighbor that spoke out about it uh, in, in opposition?
Yes, I had a, I had a neighbor right beside of me and he and his wife, Kevin and Addie Philman, presented the most incompetent evidence that was presented. Kevin stated that uh, when they bought their house there on Sykes Mill Road, that they knew Vans Welding was there. But if they, if mini warehouses had been there, they wouldn't have purchased their house. Which is the most intrusive, 24/7 welding shop? Or a peaceful, quiet mini warehouse facility that might have three cars per day coming in and out?
Yeah, I, I gotta, I gotta question about that. So the, the welding shop down there, they're running generators and, and you're hearing noise come out of this thing all day long, right?
Pretty much all day.
They do ornamental uh, ironwork for like gates, fences, handrails and stuff. They, they got a whole fleet of trucks that are coming in and out, like pick up, like work trucks, right?
That was gonna be a smell too, right? Don't they make a smell?
And I don't mind, and I wanna make it, I wanna make it quite clear that I don't mind uh, Mr. McManus being there and having a business. Not at all.
Clearly got a pretty good business. He's been around for a long time.
Were living at the time and they did not oppose to his rezoning. And I don't have a problem with anyone making a living on their property. I feel like people have a right to. But what I don't think is fair is how uh, Unionville turns a blind eye to some people that are uh, operating businesses in Unionville. And I'm gonna give you an example of one uh, person named Brandon Presley.
Okay.
Over on uh, I believe it's Old Camden Road.
He's running a business?
He runs a construction business. He's a contractor. He has a building behind his house, got a permit for an accessory building. Just moves into it, starts operating this construction business. It's not zoned for business.
And he spoke against you too.
And he spoke against me.
Really? Really? What did he have to say?
Oh, Lord.
Come on, man. You're like, that's the goose for the gander there now.
Go to the audio and listen to him. I can't remember word for word what he said, but you can go to the audio. I believe it's on uh, hearing number two.
Something about a drink or something.
Well, and you know, we were talking beforehand and Brian was mentioning that he deals with a lot of storage facilities. And uh, you, you were talking about the security element, defenses and stuff.
Oh yeah, man. They, we got, you know, distributors that they have different codes for each individual. Um, it's all keypad. We've had property damage instances where I'll go and pull the video and um, I mean, uh, up, uh, modern storage facility is probably one of the most secure properties that there is.
And most of them look good too, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's, it, well, it kinda goes back to uh, like we were talking about. The, the modern storage facility is not like these old sheds in the middle of a field. These are people, people use uh,
Or a chicken house converted to one. And I think there might be a few of them in Unionville.
Yeah, there, there is a storage lot that got approved. Did y'all see that?
Well, that one uh, that one was approved. That property was already zoned like industrial. That gentleman's dad had the forethought to many years have his rezoned. So Unionville could not stop him from doing that. But uh, what Unionville did try to do after they turned me down for mini warehouses, they introduced a text amendment to remove mini warehouses as an allowed use. They were gonna completely take it out. Now, if that don't show an abuse of power and authority, I don't know what does. Because in my humble opinion, anytime an elected official uses their powers to take people's rights from them.
Right.
Property use rights, that is nothing but an abuse of power.
Speaking of that, um, if you don't mind, I'd like to bring up these duplexes right here. What was the story behind these duplexes that are on your website again, right here?
My brother Zane wanted to build two residential duplexes on his property on six oh one. I pulled up the town's agenda on a Monday night. I happened to see they were introducing a text amendment, TC ten dash zero. I called Zane, told him we needed to go to the meeting. We went, missed the public hearing, but when they got to that line item, I jumped up out of my seat and told Mayor Simpson, Mayor Larry Simpson at the time, that uh, I realize we missed the public hearing, but I would like to be heard anyway. So Mayor Simpson said, well, go ahead. So I spoke.
Just like that?
Yeah, yeah. In a very, yeah.
Yeah.
And I told him, I said, look, the last time I checked, we still live in the United States of America and not Communist China. And what y'all are doing here is wrong. Thanks to one council person who mentioned tabling that decision until the next meeting, it was automatically tabled, but council decided to vote on tabling it anyway, even though it was automatically tabled. That's how, that's how little they knew about parliamentary procedure at the time. It was automatically tabled.
Right.
But uh, and they tried to sneak that text amendment in without us knowing it, therefore pulling the rug out from under us. So that Zane would have to go through the rezoning process so they could turn us down.
Well, let me ask you this, um, cause it sounds like this has been going on a while. Is it the same guys that owned the council seat this whole time?
Pretty much, it's been the same people. Other than when one gets ready to retire, they usually pick someone that thinks along the lines that they do.
Got it.
And they have a lot of people brainwashed in Unionville during an election year, which by the way, we have one coming up in this year in November.
How often do they?
Two years, every two years, I believe.
Every two years?
Every two years, there's an election, municipal election.
Okay.
They've pretty much kept the same people on board for the last 20 to 25 years.
It's gonna be hard to get them out of there then.
We've tried and we need for people to go to my website. Look at the problem we've had, what they've put us through, how they've treated us.
I would say, do you own the property? And you're gonna say yes, but I mean, do you really?
No, you don't.
But even then, you're, you're, you're still held to, you know, you have to pay taxes every year. Don't pay your taxes for a couple of years. It won't be your property.
Exactly.
So in Charlotte, so I live in, in Mecklenburg County in Charlotte, uh, you can't even collect rainwater on your property.
That's crazy.
Absolutely crazy.
Don't, you don't want to go that way. So let me ask you about this petition though, cause I'm looking at it as you were talking about it. Um, and I'm, obviously this was served upon the town council. What'd they do? Just throw it in the trash?
No, it's still uh, it's still filed at the courthouse. It's just sitting there and uh, any questions about that petition, I would really prefer to refer to my attorney.
Okay.
So uh,
Good enough. I just saw that it was on the website and I was like, okay.
It's still an active uh,
Is it, does it have hope? Does it have hope of, or is that somewhere we shouldn't go?
Well, like I said, I'd really, if I'm gonna discuss that part of the website, I would really rather have my attorney sitting beside of me.
No problem. They understand, man.
But it is a valid, uh, it is still.
Do you still talk? I mean, do you still go to town council meetings and uh, bring this up or is it pretty much a dead?
No, I don't bring it up when I go to the town council meetings. The reason I go to the town council meetings is to be a watchful eye. I just wish more people would become concerned and come to the meetings and see for yourself how these little peon towns try to take your rights away from you. And they don't just try, they do.
Every uh, every third Monday, seven thirty.
Yes.
Oh, no, I was just wondering that.
Yeah, every third Monday.
Your brother was at the last one. Josh was at the last one.
So I wanna, I wanna hit on some uh, just some things comparison, cause we're talking about Unionville, right? But looking around, land use and what kind of stuff, crime and uh, all the reasons that apparently the four building storage facility is gonna just be the demise of uh, poor little Unionville.
We were gonna do that conditional use too.
Yeah. So uh, Unionville is uh, about twenty-nine and a half square miles of, of Union County. Uh, compared to Monroe, which is thirty-one and a half, sort of like two acre, uh, two, two square miles difference between Monroe and Unionville. I think all of us that live here, anybody watching that's even familiar with the area, can, can put that comparison together, size wise versus what's in it and what, you know, how many people live, uh, yada yada. So Unionville sixty-six hundred people population, Monroe's thirty-four thousand five sixty-two. So twenty-eight thousand more people live in Monroe. Obviously that comes with businesses, uh, storage facilities.
Right.
Uh, restaurants, whatever, industrial. So um, pretty uh, pretty neat for me to see the size of the land versus how many people live in it. So that does tell you it's a lot of agricultural rural area. And I'm gonna tell you, I like Unionville because it is a rural protected area, right? Not, not gonna go completely off there, but when it comes to your acreage, two acres, right?
Right.
What you're wanting to do with two acres, one, one storage facility, that is point zero one percent of Unionville. You are gonna ruin Unionville with a point zero one percent.
Now you're making me laugh.
It's funny.
It is funny. And, and let me back you up a little bit. Actually, we were gonna rezone two acres, but I was only going to utilize one acre in order to comply with the watershed, some type of watershed rule. So that I wouldn't have to build a sediment pond.
Yeah.
And I did not want to build a mosquito pond, because that's all they are. I don't like them. I never have.
How many units was in your proposed?
Eighty-five units. It was gonna be four buildings.
That's not giant.
No.
At all.
So, so you said there's sixty-six hundred people in Unionville?
Roughly, yeah, two, twenty-twenty census.
And you got two hundred and fifty people to sign your petition? That's almost five percent of Unionville.
Really? And truly, if, if you're taking the whole Unionville, but the real, what I think Unionville, I'm thinking downtown where the, uh, Unionville elementary. So two hundred and fifty people in that little circle, it's damn near ninety percent of them.
Yeah, that's probably the entire population of that area.
I could have, I could have quadrupled that number of signatures if I had not been working at the time.
So it was mentioned that some of the reason it was denied is because there was sixty crimes or something in it?
Yeah, there, um, Margaret Desio, who did an impact analysis, she's a certified real estate appraiser. She did an impact analysis for me. In one of those crime reports, there were sixty crimes within a one mile radius for a month.
Related to the storage buildings?
No. There was not, there was, there were no.
Hang on, hang on. Couldn't you, couldn't you pick a, a rock on the ground and do a one mile radius and find sixty crimes on it?
How does that even relate?
When she was giving her testimony before the town council, Councilman Ed Little said to her, that sounds like a lot of crime to me. And uh, Ms. Desio said, well, uh, the crimes that are in the report that come from the sheriff's department, there were sixty of them, but none of the crimes had anything to do with the mini warehouse facility. Some of them were as minor as speeding tickets. Some of them could have been domestic violence related crimes. But none of the crimes had anything to do with a mini warehouse facility.
So no drug bust in the warehouse, no breaking down a whorehouse in there or something, right?
Whenever I'm out driving, um, especially when my wife's in the car, of course, all this is sarcasm, so.
You better lock the doors.
Man, I, I, anytime I see a, a mini warehouse complex, I, I immediately step on the gas and start speeding. And then if my wife's in the car, I just reach over and just smack her. I mean, that's why all that crimes.
Somebody's gonna come out of that mini warehouse and get you.
Yeah, I gotta hurry and get by it. Yeah, cause those are dangerous places.
Wow. So that's, that was one of the things that taught me points of detrimental to its decision.
All the opposition to what I wanted to do was very incompetent. Kevin Philman uh, said he pulled up records from the Monroe Police Department, but then when uh, my attorney was questioning about it, he, he didn't want to answer my attorney's questions.
Excuse me, sir. I uh, I didn't catch that initially when you did the crime report, but I think it is interesting to go back to. Okay. We're comparing apples and oranges if you're doing crime within a one mile radius of a storage complex in Monroe. Uh, cause by the twenty-twenty census, there's uh, thirty-four thousand five hundred and sixty people that live in Monroe uh, versus the sixty-six hundred that live in Unionville. So um, proportionally, it doesn't even compare. So how do you compare Monroe crime around a storage facility to, to a place with almost nobody in it?
Exactly. How do you?
That report was done on a storage facility in Monroe.
In Monroe.
Oh.
Yeah, Monroe City Police. That's not Unionville.
We don't have.
Tell them to go to East Charlotte and pull a report.
We do not have.
Denied.
We do not have any storage facilities in Unionville. However, there have been three other people who presented an application to build mini warehouses before I did. They got turned down. But what made their applications different, mine was contiguous with an already existing light industrial zoning, the welding shop, and the other three were not.
So they were basically wanting to put them in somebody's backyard.
Yes. And, but mine was not. What would have been a good go-between, a good transitional type of business between my house and that welding shop to transition down from the welding shop, a peaceful, quiet mini warehouse facility.
So what you're saying is if somebody tried to build a house beside the welding place, they wouldn't be able to. But if it was a storage building, it's not gonna impact what people need to do around that storage.
Right. Right. They would loan the money to put, build a, a mini warehouse facility. And I had expert testimony there.
Let me ask something here. Uh, you mentioned that you had already some storage buildings in Wingate?
Yes.
Was it this much craziness just trying to get that even started?
No, that, not in Wingate. That was built in nineteen ninety.
You didn't have to go through all this crazy?
We had to buy a zoning permit, but that property was already zoned B1 and their zoning allowed it.
Wingate's totally different ball, because they got, there's, I mean, you got a food line, you got a burger king, you got a bait, you got business.
Oh, believe you me, if I could take my property and pick it up and move it somewhere, Wingate's where I would move it.
I thought about this on the way over here. Why don't you just go like literally right across the closest to the center of Unionville and build your shit like right on the other side of the road? I mean, that's a big, that's a big one of these right here.
You could call it Screw Unionville Store Hall.
Oh, man. F Unionville.
If y'all don't mind.
Letter F, Unionville.
We also had a retired uh, Union County Shepherd, Sheriff's Deputy there too.
That testified that night that it would not cause crime and this kind of.
I mean, the crime deal, and here's the thing, after listening to all this, and I, I love this and I, and I think this is more about the principle and the reasoning behind it, which I completely support, one thousand percent, fight the good fight, fight for the cause, right? This, this storage deal, it's obviously been shut down. It's done, it's over with, but that doesn't silence the person, right?
Exactly. And I'm not going to remain silent.
With that, with that, this is not about the crime. The crime is a way to shed by bad light on something that people just don't want. They're against, they're against you and/or the, the, the facility. It ain't got shit to do with crime. That was the one straw they grabbed.
I don't think it has anything to do with the facility at this point. I think it has to do with that letter he wrote years ago. That's what I honestly think of it.
Wanted to go back to what's the longstanding history? Like this is Unionville, the only thing missing from Union County in the front is, is re in the front of this, re Union County.
He was approached after the meeting by one of them and said,
Councilman Randy Bog.
He said, you wrote something about it or something.
He accused me of writing it about him.
Still living in his head, rent free.
Yeah.
But one point, one thing I would like to mention before we uh, run out of time for this, councilperson Andrew Benton, who is on the Unionville Town Council.
Okay.
Uh, one night I was at a planning board meeting. And this was after council turned my mini warehouse project down. And Councilman Benton walked up to the podium and addressed the planning board. And he told the planning board that we, as a town council, we do what you tell us to do. And I'm looking at him thinking, uh, well, you sure didn't do what the planning board recommended y'all do in my case. So after Benton got done talking, I went to the podium and addressed the planning board and told them not to listen to Councilman Benton, because they sure did not listen to y'all when it come to my case.
I like it. It sounds, it sounds like you going there and just give them hell.
Oh, yeah. We, we need to send a camera to follow him to the next meeting.
We need to do a live.
It's one of the main ones that needs to be put off of that town council. And we do have an election coming up this year in twenty twenty-five. Benton is up for reelection and we need to put him off that board.
He's also in.
And the two other ones too.
He's also in violation. Uh, I don't know how much I can get into here.
The chicken ordinance.
You know, my dad had to get rid of his chickens, but somebody went by Andrew Benton's and he's got chickens.
Yeah. A councilperson in violation of their.
Wait a minute.
Does, does he live on property or in like a neighborhood?
It don't matter.
There's no, no, I'm just curious.
There's no neighborhoods in Unionville.
Well, I mean, Unionville.
No, I mean, Unionville is, that's one of the things about there, there's not like big developments in Unionville.
I really want to encourage the public to go to our website, uh, the truth about Unionville NC dot com. And to, of course, listen to, listen to and watch us speak on the videos. But by all means, please go to the audios that are at the bottom of the, the website and listen to those. And you can see for yourself, it's very clear that Unionville based their decision to turn down my mini warehouse project on incompetent evidence. And it's very evident.
Are you still fighting this? Like a current date, if we were to fast forward to now, do you have any plans to like continually go in there and try to, you know, apply again or speak to any of those council members?
We're not going away.
We're not going away. That's the way I want.
So you attend every council meeting?
I pretty much go to all of them unless for some reason I can't, but we uh, there's a group of about uh, I don't know, a half a dozen to a dozen people that will go to the meetings. A town council is just like the state legislature. They create the rules and the laws that we have to abide by, or that some of us have to abide by in our communities. You need to take an interest in your community by attending your meetings and you will see for yourself how far, you will see for yourself firsthand how corrupt a lot of our town boards are. And it's not just Unionville. There are other towns in Union County and other counties all across this state. Unionville Town Council turns a blind eye to so many things. I've got a neighbor right across the road from me in the pines that years ago got a permit to build an accessory building. Once he got the power turned on to it, he moved into it, then did an outfit to it without a permit, added facilities so they could go to the restroom without permits and moved into it and started operating his business. What he did, he avoided going through the rezoning process. And Unionville Town Council has turned a blind eye to it for years. And then after he moved into his building, they appointed this guy, Mr. Loving, to a term on their planning board, knowing he was in violation of their land use ordinance. So if you're, if you're one of their friends, they turn a blind eye to you. Just like the Mr. Presley over on Old Camden Road, operating his construction business on residential property, not zoned for business. Now, my property where I run a business is grandfathered, because my dad built that back in nineteen fifty. So that's different. And there are some others that are grandfathered.
Let me ask you this. Let me ask you this. Do you feel like you should even have, have to have a planning or a zoning? Or do you feel like there should be people in control of what you can do with your land in general? Do you think you, if you own land, should you have to go through the process of saying, hey, can I build X Y Z?
You really shouldn't have to. However, I do believe in having rules to go by. For example, there should be setback requirements. For example, you should not be allowed to build anything next door to your neighbor that would be detrimental to their health or to anyone's health. There needs to be rules, but to tell someone uh, you can't build uh, a building on your bill, a property that's larger than your house, that's stupid. It's your property. And there's a case like that in Unionville right now.
What, what's the reasoning behind that? I mean, if you have, if you have a shop bigger than your house?
It's against their land use ordinance. You're, I don't know the, the specific rule, but you can't build, have a building bigger than your home.
That is, that is a new one for me.
And that is, that is absolutely stupid.
Well, that stinks if you live in a trailer and you wanna build a building, huh? So, uh, Tim, I got a question. I, I see the thing up here about the firemen. There's some firemen on this council, I assume?
Uh, that uh, Andrew Benton that we were talking about previously, uh, he's an Union County E O M S worker and also a Unionville volunteer fireman. And there used to be another fireman on the board named Ken Brown. He's no longer on the board. And seven of the speakers. on the board named Ken Brown. He's no longer on the board. And seven of the speakers who came and spoke against my mini warehouse facility were also Unionville volunteer firemen. So they just kind of all tie together. It's very evident that it was a group of volunteer firemen that came and spoke against me because some of them, the majority of them lives three to five miles away from where I want to build this facility. It, it's absolutely ridiculous.
So do you think this is an issue where they're just the, the people on the council? Since there is a fireman in there and the people on the council, they're, they're kind of pulling strings, getting their buddies to come. Their buddies don't.
That's exactly what it is.
They have absolutely really no care what you do there, but they're doing it because they're being told.
For their friends.
So when you were in high school, I know you probably went to high school with a lot of these guys. Did you, uh, mess around with some of their girlfriends or what?
Maybe so.
Now we're getting to the bottom of it.
Taking it down the rabbit hole.
Oh, Lord.
We ain't got one thing against.
Rabbit hole.
I would like to make it quite clear that Zane and I have nothing against firemen.
Yeah. Uh, I mean, I, I feel like you'd have to be, there's something kind of wrong with you to have something against someone that risked his life to save other people's
Hey, we don't have anything against firemen as a general rule, police officers, sheriff's deputies. Actually they are our friends. It's a.
Have you had anybody threatened or tell you to take it down or that you should take it down or why don't you take it down?
No one has threatened me or, or told me to take it down.
But people do pull in and want to look at it?
Oh yes. We have a lot of people that pull in. Uh, some of them have actually come up to the house and talked to me. And I would like to encourage the public that as long as you are friendly.
Yeah.
Like we are, because we are very civil, friendly people, you're more than welcome at my home. I want to talk to you. I sincerely want you to know that I am civil and friendly. I have been wronged by that town council. Other people have been wronged. I want to make it quite clear that this is not all about me. The people that owned the property at Five Forks have been done wrong. There's a gentleman over on Cheney Road that wanted to do a shop behind his house. He already had the shop in place and all he wanted to do was brickwork. And that got turned down.
Wow.
They just have no consideration for the fact that we can't all be a fireman, policeman, deputy, lawyer, doctor, nurse, teacher. We can't all do that for a living. Some of us lay bricks, some of us do plumbing, building. Our dad told us many years ago, boys, you can't live in this world by yourself. You have to let other people live too. And you have to let their ways of making a living exist. And that is the truth. But in Unionville, our council thinks that it has to be their way of life or no way. And that's pretty much what we have.
In these closing minutes, uh, we're getting ready to wrap this thing up though. Is there anything that you would like to add that would clarify the story to the viewers out there? They could understand what's going on?
No, other than I would, uh, like to emphasize again, for the public, please visit our website, have an open mind and listen to us. And by all means, feel free to stop at my house if you are friendly and civil. Uh, you're more than welcome. We have always welcomed people there and we always will.
I think something else that you do, I see, uh, you, you give out free firewood to people in need, right? Is that you?
Yes, that's us.
I mean.
We are more than happy to give it away. I'd much rather give it away than for it to lay out there and rot. I do encourage people to come get it if they can, but I will deliver it if they can't.
I do want to say that I hope when November comes, the people of Unionville will take a look at this and say, are these people representing us to the capacity that we want? And if they're not Dennis, they got to put in that vote, nominate somebody else. Um, but.
Well, can I say one more thing before you stop? I want to emphasize, and I may have already covered it. I can't remember. We are not trying to turn Unionville into another Sun Valley or a South Park, Charlotte. There is a need for a few amenities. The infrastructure in Unionville is not in place for Unionville to go wild with commercial development. Unionville doesn't have that to worry about.
How would you feel? And, and maybe have you presented this? And I think we need an episode two on, on this honestly. So, um, what about some limitations on it? Maybe a storage facility, a mini market?
Well, I have always said that at Five Forks, in my opinion, we need five things. We need a grocery store.
And that, but you cap it there.
Yes.
So anybody.
That would serve the people for probably 50 years.
Right.
And then the people fit, we're going to be dead and gone in 50 years. So the people in 50 years could do what they want.
You're for growth, but at a certain amount.
A controlled amount.
And you're saying that Unionville's at the point now that that should open up this next level of growth?
Yes.
Because I think that's exactly what's going on here is it is controlled growth, but they're, they're strangling that growth. You think there's a need.
Board, some of them, when they run for office may say they are for controlled growth, but they're not. They never allow any to come in.
Yeah.
I hope that they, uh, that the viewers got a better picture of what's going on. They understand that sign. We are definitely running low on our time. So Jeff, if you would, will you take us up and out of this dark rabbit hole, please?
All right, guys. Thank you for tuning in. Um, make sure that you hit that like button, subscribe to us, hit that notification bell. Uh, I want to thank Tim and Zane Kaziah for coming on the show, uh, giving us a lot of good insightful information on how the counties are really run, uh, how the government is really keeping their foot on our neck. Stay tuned. We'll be bringing up some new topics in the upcoming weeks. And again, message us, send us an email if you've got an idea you'd like us to talk about. Peace.